It's nine o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting of the Carrington County Commissioners to order. If you'd please rise for their pledge of allegiance. Item two is a call for public comment if anybody would like to comment. They can do it here in person or they can use the telephone numbers six oh five eight eight two six two four eight. Or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Item three, is there any conflict of interest?
No, no.
Okay. Item four, we need a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable to approve the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, you know, motion to approve the minutes of the May fourteenth. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable to approve the minutes. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, number six. Monthly reports. Wilkes go right down to B. Highway Superintendent Rick would come up. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable to approve the minutes. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, number six. Monthly reports. Wilkes go right down to B. Highway Superintendent Rick would come up.
Morning, Rick.
I got moved out.
Yeah.
Okay, I got a couple of different things today.
Turn your mic on, Rick. There you go.
I got a couple of different things, this will be towards the end. I take one pass down. Is that, did you email him something? No, I didn't. This also. Okay. We'll start off with our monthly report, our load limits came off April thirtieth. We started our ten hour days on April twenty ninth. Our hours are seven AM to five thirty PM, Monday through Thursday. The guys are crack sealing, we should finish with that this week, we have to move on to other things. They're also out on the asphalt looking for any breakup areas, I've noticed a couple of spots that will have to have some attention. We'll also start stockpiling P rock. In places, most of our chip seal will be on the west side of the county this year. We also had an issue with a beaver in one of the places that we want to pile P rock. Beaver plugged the culvert, water went over the road going into the pit. The GF and P is helping us out on that little project. What's that? Yes, several.
Intentional damage.
Yeah, he didn't have a permit to do it, so. The, the roads that we plan on chip sealing are County Road twenty seven. It's on the west side of Henry, which is four thirty seventh avenue. We'll do that from Highway two twelve all the way north to the county line. Then we'll be doing County Road twenty three, which is four hundred and forty second avenue. That is south of two twelve from Tinkertown down to the county line. We'll also be doing County Road ten, which is one hundred and seventieth street. This is straight west of Memorial Park. We'll do that over to County Road twenty three. And then we'll do County Road nineteen, which is four hundred and forty eighth avenue. That is north of Memorial Park to State Highway twenty. And then one hundred and sixty eighth street. This is west of Compesca Lodge, there's a two mile stretch there that will come up to County Road nineteenth. All of our motorcycle friends will love that.
Wow.
There's roughly forty miles that we're going to do, and then we have some for Pelican Township that we're going to do. The county was reimbursed for the ER project. That we had to do last summer up by Waverly. We received eighty thousand dollars back on that. Our paving project that was supposed to get done last year on County Road twenty three that we built up a couple of years ago. Will hopefully get done in June. That has to do with whether there may be a change order on that, just for the fact that. They may have to do some prep work on that. Because it's a time issue, if we'd have time to do it, or if they'll have to do it, so.
That's, that's about a half mile, isn't it?
Yeah, roughly, there's twenty, about twenty five hundred feet there, close to that, yep. And it's right. In the middle of everything, so, and it's got, it's posted at twenty five miles an hour, but. It gets a lot of washboards because there's a lot of truck traffic through there. County Road four. Which would be west of Florence. The water's only a couple of feet from the top of the road there. There's been high water there since last year. And I've talked to I M E G Engineering about getting a permit to pump that water out of there to lower that. And we just pump it over the hill into. Into Dry Lake, or no, excuse me, Grass Lake. And then it'll just go down the system. But I, I will be visiting more with them. And we probably have to rent a home. From somewhere to pump that. Because. The rain that we're getting. That whole area is full of water over there.
It's not gonna help.
No, and. Where that's at, to build that up. It's in the middle of nowhere, so. But I'm, I'm hoping we can get that accomplished. Also, on the, the DOT had a rumble stripe program. And they asked if we had any roads that we'd like to put edge lines and rumble strips on. And County Road six A. Which takes you by Medicine Lake, there's thirteen, roughly thirteen miles there. On six A and then it turns into twenty three. To put edge line rumble strips on that all the way down to two twelve. And I put in to have that done. Just to inform you that. It's one hundred percent funded by the federal safety funds program. So the county doesn't have any cost in it, they'll, they'll cut the rumble strips, they should put the white lines back, they should seal it, put the white lines back on. And those are just the edge lines on both sides, kind of like what old eighty one County Road eleven is by Myron's place.
I have a question on that.
Okay.
I had someone approach me with the idea of doing that same thing, west of the casino. That three way stop sign there, actually, the question is, is. And, and we can talk about this a little bit later, but number one, why is there a three way stop sign at that intersection? And number two, is it possible to put a flashing red light at that intersection for, for cross traffic there? But you mentioned rumble strips, I'm wondering, is there rumble strips there at that intersection for east and west town traffic, okay?
Yes.
And for north and south?
Just, just to the north, because if you come from the north, there's no stop.
There's no stop sign there.
There's rumble strips on three different directions there.
Okay. Okay.
Yep, and those flashing red lights, those are a solar, probably have to be a solar thing there. And those are roughly sixteen hundred dollars.
Yeah. I know we put them just south of Myron's place on that corner there that we've had problems, you know, we had several fatals there. And I don't think we've had one recently, knock on wood, at that intersection, but the question was with the three way stop, that if we have. Somebody coming and they don't know, you know, that could be.
But there's, there's stop ahead signs on all three of those intersections.
Okay.
There's stop ahead signs, there's rumble strips, and there's a stop sign there.
Okay. I haven't gone south on that, so I don't know what that's like approaching that intersection, but I just wanted to ask about it.
Downgrade it, but we all have to drive. And get off our phones.
I get a three way stop sign, I'm just, you know, it's been my experience that a three way stop intersection is not good when you have a three way stop.
And it has a sign right on the stop sign, it's a three way stop.
Okay.
It's a, I think it's a three way stop, I've looked out there for twenty some years. And it's always been a three way stop, isn't it, because that freeway is a blind corner?
Yeah, it's, it's a blind corner there. So that's why.
But it's not blind going to the south?
No, no, it's wide open going south, you can see everything.
Okay.
It's just when you come up, especially from the south. East and west, you can't see if anybody would happen to blow the stop sign. You know, that's why that's there.
All right.
I think, I think they've been, the rumble strips have been in there since Rich Mall was.
Yeah, we carved those in there quite a while ago. Yep.
Okay. You just mentioned the rumble strip project, and I thought about that, that might be a good intersection if we didn't have any there, I couldn't remember if there was or not, so, thank you.
Okay, our part time guy started around the first of May, helped mow the grass, we're going to probably need him full time now. And I'm done with my monthly report, but the one I gave you with the town of Florence. Charlie had asked about getting Main Street fixed, and there's a two block section in there. That needs to have a dugout. Performed on it. And I was wrong yesterday when I told you that it was two feet that they were gonna dig out, that was just one foot and put base course in and fabric. And it's roughly fifty five feet long and thirty five feet wide, and that's on the south side of the street in front of the. Fire hall and stuff there on, on the main street of Florence. And if you go to the second page. The cost estimate was a hundred and seventy two thousand five hundred dollars to do that. And that was also milling that two block section and putting a lift, two, two inch lift of asphalt on that. The other one, the sixteen thousand is on County Road twenty three, which is on the end of Main Street. And all the fire hydrants along the road, there's all the nice dip. And that was to fix those, to mill those out and put a nice patch on those, that's something I'll probably do, but. One hundred and seventy two thousand five hundred dollar project. I'll put that in next year's budget to have that done. Because that, that was not a budgeted item. But paving on patches and stuff, I do have money for that kind of stuff, but unless you guys want to come up with a hundred and seventy two five hundred, so.
Now, is this the spot where it, it's got rough and holy and?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a spot there that's kind of broke up, we'll, we'll patch it a little bit this summer. And kind of get the, so the water can't keep going into the road, but. It's a pretty good sized project, and like I said, I'll, I'll put it in the next year's budget to have that done. Because it's, it's, it's right on Main Street, and there's a two block section in there that needs to be, needs to be worked on. So, because that's, they've got their community center right there in the fire hall and.
In your picture, I see there's a vehicle pulling a pontoon, pontoon, and that's just because maybe they needed to get out of there. Because the road is really bad.
It's County Road.
Twenty three?
Four, I think.
Oh, okay.
It goes right through, right through town, and twenty three goes north and south, Main Street's east and west.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll let people know that they got something coming for them next year, so.
So, seven hundred and seventy five feet? That stretch that there, is that right?
Yeah. Correct. Two blocks, just a little over two blocks, because it was going to go past the intersection on each side.
Okay.
Because it was kind of, we looked at it and there was big cracks and stuff. Also, the guys crack sealed on each end of that. By the school and by the elevator.
That's one of the roads, one of the two main roads that goes up to the school.
Right, right.
Yep, yep.
It gets a lot of traffic.
Does.
Yeah, it does. Okay, the next one is our approach permit. I want to upgrade that, I'm just giving you a look at it, I haven't done anything. This is what I proposed to put on the website. And the second page is what's on the website. And if you notice the first page, there's a change. Like the slopes, it's more of a slope, I always tell people when they, they want to add an approach. Okay, would you like your wife or anybody that in your family to drive off the road and hit that approach? You know, because some of them build them straight up and down. And they're supposed to have at least a three to one slope, this would be a four to one, so it'd have a little more slope, so you'd drive over, you might. Be airborne, but you're not gonna hit a brick wall. Also, it gives what you can and can't have in your approach, because. People want to put their rock piles and garbage and bury it in there, and none of that can be in there, that's always been that way. But it just spells it out a little bit. And. DOT specs, also, there was never. Specific on gravel. And I've got four inches of gravel on top of your approach. Because before, if you look at the old one, there's nothing in there on any of that. But it's just an upgrade, you know, that I'll put on the website so people can see it.
It's good. Page two.
On page two, yep, that's what's on there now.
Do we have to, do we have to change in ordinances or anything like that, or is it just say, Highway Superintendent sets up a permit?
No, because there, there are certain specifics that have to be followed with the codified law.
Right.
So.
So that's, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's just a little more explanation for everybody to see.
Do they need somebody like an engineer?
Yeah, we do, we do. Yeah, that, it all has to go through our office.
Okay.
You know, if you want to put an approach in, because. Somebody will want an approach from here to that wall from their other approach, and there's specifications that you cannot do that. There has to be site visibility for each approach, you know. I've got an approach up north of town that I need to go and visit with a farmer that he just made last fall that. He never got an, a permit or put a culvert or anything in it, and.
So, like a drawing or something, some kind of a plan, a drawing or some kind of a plan with it?
Well, no, just, just do this. It has, it kind of spells it out with a twenty foot top. Four to one slopes, you know, if it needs a culvert, some places don't need a culvert if it's on top of the hill, but other places do, you know, so. We don't want any places where there's standing water. You know, and part of this came from, I was on one of our roads the other day checking things out, and I just happened to notice this new house. And first thing I did was looked at their approach, the approach had been there since last fall, they told me, and I'd never paid any attention. But here's this brand new house with a drain tile for a culvert. And we don't allow plastic or anything like that, so, and that, that spells that out, that it be new metal pipe. So. And everybody asked why we can't have plastic, but if the ditch would catch on fire, your plastic pipe melts. There you are, so.
So, with a melted plastic pipe.
Yeah, with a melted plastic pipe, so.
In a situation like that, what do you, what do you do?
I, I talked to the landowner and told him what they needed to do to correct it. So, and like I said, I. I put on miles and there's things like that that I don't notice, the only thing that caught my eye was, hey, there's a brand new house, and I looked at the approach, so. They, they told me that the approach went in last fall, and I never, never saw it, you know, because I'm, I'm not. Looking for stuff like that, I'm not going out specifically looking for that stuff.
Is there a way to include that? Permit, driveway application and construction permit in with our building permits, so that it all is inspected at the same time?
I think in most cases, when they apply for a building permit, the question is always asked, what, what approach, how are you going to get to this premise? You know, what, have you cleared it with the township or county or whatever?
I'm just wondering if we could piggyback that with this form.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe it, it might be something that.
Idea for efficiency.
So they realize they need the road authority's approval. And, yeah, so, I mean, talk to Luke. Because when we approve those.
Streamline it a little bit.
Yep, and I'll, I'll visit with Luke and give him that and see if that can be added, so.
I have one other thing now that we're talking about permits, I was approached by, and I can't remember who it was, and it doesn't matter, about tiling under the road. And where that permit is, where, where can they get the permit to do that? Actually, he's willing to do it, and, and after I asked a few questions, he quit asking more questions, I think it was the township board, he was. Going to tile under, I, I questioned whether, where he was gonna tile too. And, but do we have a, do we have a one month this quarter? Tiling, I know we used it, I know we used one over at Transberg. But is there a?
There, there is, but I'm not a huge fan of it until we have it completely ironed out, Luke and I have talked about this too.
And basically, the issue is, the, it's, the process and the ordinance is not super clear, honestly, and then I understand you want reassurance instead of.
Yep.
You know, if something does go wrong, we're not, the county's not gonna be stuck with the bill.
Yep, so, that's kind of the. Yeah, because it's kind of like those. Fire hydrants up at Florence. Every one of those has a dip on it. Now, we're gonna have to fix that, so if you tile across the road and there creates a dip. Why should the county have to have that fixed so you can drain your land?
Yeah.
You know, the county's not into subsoil drainage.
That's not a one time maintenance site.
No, no.
Since we found that, had our, that meeting a while ago, I think approached you, I wonder if you got, for the same person.
So when we get that question from a resident, and it seems like it's a legitimate situation, where do they start?
It starts with Luke.
Okay.
Yep.
I sent everybody to Luke.
I think we need to be receptive to their question in concern and not just shoot them down, I mean, maybe it's a legitimate deal where.
Yep.
They want to assume that responsibility, we just have to write that out, so.
See, that has to also be determined. The landowner, because the land gets sold, that stays with the land.
Right.
You know, that's something that has to be ironed out too, because if Myron buys a quarter of land and it's tiled, and it goes underneath the road and it fails. The, the new landowner will have to pay for that, because the county shouldn't have to pay for any of that.
Right.
Because we don't need the tile.
I know with the individual that I talked to, he said that he did a statement, like he bought under a state road. And it was a pretty straightforward process, so maybe you can look at what they got.
Yep, so, yeah, state has a little more money than what the county has.
They're not in the business of replacing private damage, so, so.
Yep, exactly, yeah.
We could probably mirror what they're doing.
Tiling, with more people wanting to tile all the time, how soon before we have to put in and dig drainage ditches?
Oh, we're not gonna do that.
The natural contour of the land, in fact, I come from Minnesota and I watched tiling for years and years. And there's ditches that run through there, and then they come through every few years and gotta clean them back out, and I was just north of. Cottonwood Lake up there, or South Cottonwood Lake, and where they dug that all out up there again. And with all the tiling and all the silt that comes down, that will be a problem, that will be an extended problem.
Yep, and then, and I get told the same thing, and I ask them if they remember what state they're living in, is this at Minnesota?
Right.
You know, so. If the water can't get to like the big sewer. Without creating a ditch. You know, or you're flooding a township or a county road. That's not right, or why should everybody in the county have to pay for you to drain your water?
I know it eventually is gonna run down to Compesca, but there's.
Some of those places have to get pretty deep before it runs to Compesca.
Sorry, okay, all right, well, thanks, Rick.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
All right, good.
Um, thanks. Steve, if you want to come up for the, your report.
We are close to Minnesota.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Well, we will start out with the egg building, I don't have this on the notes, but with. Events going on is some meetings and some auctions and stuff like that going on, but also coming up is the election. And stuff is June fourth, and due to that, I've had the staff setting some posts and. And making a hood for protecting the AC units on the west side of the South Expo Building. Also, the handicap spots that were along the building are now moved out into the parking lot. It's been an issue and concern before that people parking along, along there and entering in and out of the building, almost been incidences of backing into people, so I moved the handicap spots to the parking lot. Area closest that I could get to, to that door. And stuff to door H. Government buildings. Contractor are progressing very well in the cooling system project, which is actually has started up this past week and so, so. The courthouse here, well, does have air, so when we get warm, we haven't really been too warm yet lately, so. But because of that, the contractors are working on the AC units in the detention center portion. With completion, the end of May before they'll have all cooling in their facility, so it's gonna get rather warm in, in the, in the jail. In the next month or so. The boilers have been removed from the detention center, and they are beginning to install the heat piping throughout that facility to this facility. So, at this week. Park, this coming weekend, Memorial Weekend, it is full, there might be one or two tent sites left, but otherwise, it's, it is full. As far as goes, there has been five hundred and ninety four online. Fifty nine offline reservations that have made, that were made with a total of fifty six thousand two hundred fifty nine dollars. Of reservation sales. A hundred and ninety two point of. Point of sales. And that is of the end of Sunday. And the weed equipment is nearly ready for the season, expecting to start with some spraying probably in next week or so. We'll be ramping up in, in June of full force. Annual, the annual spring, the good, the bad, the similar weed identification tour will be held near Esteline area on June twelfth. From ten to three, this is an event that we've probably started probably nearly. Probably seven years ago and so we had, we've primarily had it in the northeast part of the state and. We've primarily had it in the northeast part of the state, and, um, there was a letter that was just sent out this morning, so I think so far. We've had close to almost three hundred and some participants throughout all the years that have come to this event. Um, we've had as high as a hundred and then as low as probably thirty-five, forty. So that, so it really gets people's attractions, so they had to know, um, that they don't have to spray everything. And there's a lot of weeds that might, like, look the same as a noxious weed, but they, it really helps for identification. Um, West Nile, um, uh, I requested six thousand dollars for the West Nile grant, which in late June before knowledge of approval. Otherwise, I'm working on the two thousand twenty-five budgets. Any questions? Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. Item seven, we need action to approve job description for. Appraiser one apprentice and the Director of Equalization Office.
Good morning, commissioners. I told Sean I would cover this for her. She's in the middle of things, so. Um, in front of you, you should have the, um, job description for Appraiser one position. This is, um, just had a few updates. So I need you to approve it, and then we'd like to, um, also request permission to, um, advertise, post and advertise for hiring for this position. This has been open for a little while. Um, the resignation was last year, but just waiting for, or earlier this year, excuse me. Um, timing to be better in that office to actually move forward, so.
Second. Okay, motion by Gable, second by Van Dusen to, uh, approve this job description. Any more questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, now we need a motion to advertise and hire for this.
I'll make the motion, second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Dusen to open this up and advertise and hire for this position. Any further questions?
Just to comment, this is obviously on our wage scale. It's a pay grade thirty. It starts at twenty-two fifty-six an hour. This is an inexperienced position. They would then become certified and be able to move up into that Appraiser two position. So good opportunity for growth in this position. The next level that they move into is in the twenty-seven range, so. Um, good opportunity for somebody in the area.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Hey, item nine, we need action to reschedule the June fourth meeting to June sixth due to the primary election.
So.
Second, motion by Johnson, second by Waterman.
We will be canvassing the votes on that day also, and we will also be drawing for our post-election audit of which, uh, precincts we will be auditing.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item ten, note Memorial Day offices will be closed.
Yep, next Monday, May twenty-seventh. Um, all county offices will be closed and the courthouse.
Item eleven. Uh, discussion, possible action to enact burn ban resolution. Looks like that'll be, uh, taken care of by the rain, so.
No abatements.
Okay, item thirteen, actions to approve claims per payment.
We do have a few of those. Uh, so one of them is to election systems and software. Hopefully, this is getting to the end of some of my pre-election costs in the amount of one thousand seven hundred twelve dollars and ten cents. Another, um, claim for health equity, that is the monthly administrative fees, um, sixty-nine dollars. And then the Watertown Public Opinion for publishing, that is in the amount of eight hundred eighty-six dollars and four cents. For a grand total of two thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. So you can do that one first, and then we do have the E nine-one-one, which we'll separate out with Troy.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Um, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Right, and the E nine-one-one, uh, that will be paid to the City of Watertown, uh, for March is.
Record, I will be excusing myself from this one.
Very good. Uh, the amount is twenty-three thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars and twelve cents, and that will go to the City of Watertown.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman to approve the, the charges for the pass-through for nine-eleven. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
No budget supplements, no personnel changes.
Item sixteen, action to approve travel requests. I see there's.
One, we have one for, um, community service office individual to travel to a housing conference. And you have all the other information and details of that travel.
That is a budgeted item. I'll make the request to approve, motion to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. Any more?
I do have a, a question. Uh, the three hundred and eighty dollars from Miley, this was in Peter, correct? I don't know. She's gonna drive back and forth there. I, I drive that all the time, and it's more like two hundred and some dollars, not three hundred and eighty.
It's gotta be a title.
I'm not sure. They get a different rate than elected, which I can't say off the top of my head right now what that is, so.
It's four hundred miles.
Yeah.
Mine was always four hundred and four miles.
Right.
So four hundred miles, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure either how she calculated that.
The federal rate.
Yeah. She may have incorrectly. I mean. I mean, you're approving her travel when she turns in her invoice or whatever. We can double-check it at that point.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, item seventeen, public notice of a possible quorum of commissioners could be in attendance. Don't think there's. You have any in your book, Myron?
I, I do know that, uh. Moving the, uh. The meeting because of the election in June to the sixth, um. I'll be traveling. I, we're gonna have the same time, nine o'clock?
Yep.
I don't, I'll, I'll make the nine o'clock. I'll, I'll be here, but I'll be traveling back from here. From the retirement meeting.
I don't think there's any. I can't think of any other thing.
Other than that, I don't have anything.
Yes, we will be canvassing.
Hey, item eighteen, is there any old business? Item nineteen, any new business? Hey, item twenty, now is the time for, uh, the open public comments. If anybody would like to. Seeing none, any commissioner comments?
Mr. Chair, uh, just one thing, uh, coming up on Thursday at one o'clock, Commissioner Schwer, Chair, Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioner Schwer. Chairman Schwer and I will be meeting with, uh, the City of Watertown officials to have a discussion on the Thirty-first Street. Uh, issue over by the ice arena, just to keep that discussion going, so just so everybody's aware of that. Anything comes out of it, we'll be sure and present it to you.
A little side note on that, uh, with those barriers that are ordered to put up there. Uh, Rick was gonna check on those and see once how they were progressing.
Okay. Great.
Um. I have. Haven't, there's no need for any executive session?
Vote to adjourn.
Is there?
Second.
Second, but I think, motion by Johnson, second by Gable to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, meeting adjourned.
Got three hundred and thirteen voters as of this morning.
Oh, wow, that's picking up.